All right. Good evening. I called the Planning Commission for June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five to order at seven oh two P M. First, first order of business will be roll call. Um Chair Testman, I'm present. Vice Chair Kukup.
Present.
Commissioner Hurley, was he able to join? He did email and indicated he's under the weather, uh requesting excusal. Uh Commissioner Lambert, were you able to join us?
I'm here.
Awesome. Thank you for making the effort. Uh Commissioner Muziak.
Present.
And Commissioner Murphy.
Present.
All right, we have a quorum. Uh again, Commissioner Hurley um did email, uh requesting excusal, so I move that he be excused. Can I get a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is approved. All right, agenda approval. Um so looking at today's agenda, I move that we approve it as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay, so today's agenda is approved. Uh public comment, I don't see anyone in person and uh we only accept comment by in-person attendees. Did we receive any written feedback?
No, we didn't.
Okay, all right, so that'll conclude public comment period, and Councilmember Johnson.
Greetings, Commission. Uh after the long dark of the winter, it's nice to have shorts weather. Uh so at our last meeting, we did get an update from WashDOT in person, uh from uh some folks that are uh representing both the contractor and uh WashDOT themselves on the interchange and the Highway eighteen widening. Uh and I think the uh good news is that uh during that last closure for the five days, they were able to complete all the work that they needed to do on the section that's south of uh I ninety, uh and uh that uh yeah, everything went very smoothly. Uh for the part that is north of I ninety, there will be a a second five-day closure, uh but that should be the last one, and it should be somewhere around mid to late July-ish. But they did say that it would not be during the Fourth of July weekend, so at least there's that. Uh and then after that closure and when it reopens, uh then the uh interchange will be reopened in its final configuration, so we'll be in the diverging diamond configuration at that point. Uh there will be some landscaping work still to do uh and after the interchange opens, and they will also have to continue some work on the culverts. Uh but that shouldn't have too much significant impact on traffic. Uh that said, unfortunately, um well, it is more just sort of my prediction as to how I guess things are gonna go is uh that they won't have uh eighteen open um in time for the interchange itself with the widening, um not the road, there will still be lanes open. I mean, they won't have the widening completed on eighteen uh by the time that the uh interchange opens, so it could seem as though nothing's changed at that point, like, you know, why do we do all this? Well, it's because widening on eighteen, still going on, and um once that is completed, expected to be sometime this fall, maybe late fall, uh then things should be much more smooth around the interchange and much safer. Um I I always get scared when I drive through there every day, and I know I'm not alone. So uh that's all good news that things are moving forward. Also, the splash pad did open successfully on June sixth. There was a huge turnout, hundreds of people showed up with all their kids, um some without kids, um I mean, it's public. Um and even more showed up throughout the weekend. Uh I saw kids that afternoon all over town. I had some other things I had to do, but I saw them all over town uh in their swimming wear and patronizing local businesses with their families. So I think that this could be something that'll rekindle some of that economic fire that we've really been hurting for uh over the last year. Doesn't mean it's like the the one solution to all of our problems, but um but I I felt pretty hopeful seeing how much activity I saw that afternoon. Uh and then finally, the uh S R one mixed-use final plan amendments were adopted by the council. That's the second part of uh that process of uh adopting and implementing the retail overlay. Oh, council adopted that for downtown and changed the code the at the previous meeting, uh but uh because of the way that uh the mixed-use final plan was written, it wouldn't apply to center unless we made some changes to the mixed-use final plan, uh so those were adopted. This uh one action, well, two actions, I suppose, uh the ordinance and the resolution were my biggest priority personally uh on the council for the last three and a half years. So on a personal note, I'm very thankful to all the hard work that staff put into that, figuring out what what was even going on in the first place, what even would be a path uh to legally um uh make some of those needed changes. And of course, uh thankful to the Planning Commission who struggled with it uh far longer than council had to, and uh as a result of um the Planning Commission's hard work getting it to the state that it was in, I think we were able to uh help it sail through the council a little bit more easily. So that's one of the big reasons why you guys are here is uh to take care of a lot of that heavy lifting while we're focusing on all kinds of other things. So thank you, and that's all I've got.
Awesome. Uh any questions or comments on the issues raised by Councilmember Johnson, Vice Chair Kukup?
None for me.
Commissioner Muziak?
None.
Commissioner Murphy?
Um the um the Center Street portion of the code change, did that end up also including, I know there's like an ex- the council decided to expand or the Community Development Commission uh uh Committee expanded, right? It includes like a Yeah, I know what you're talking about. So uh after the Planning Commission uh forwarded the recommendation to council, uh the staff uh came to us uh at the um Community Development Committee with some alternatives uh to that um that they had considered, and then they also recommended actually not doing those anyway. Uh and that, yeah, would have expanded um the retail overlay to include uh the former I G A as we all lovingly call it uh as well as the portion that's across Snoqualmie Parkway with uh the Safeway and the Bartels, uh et cetera. Um but uh because those commercial spaces are uh fairly uniquely different from what's on center, they're larger footprints, larger areas, uh it seemed more appropriate, both the staff and to the Community Development Committee to uh leave that a bit of work to zoning in the future, since, uh as I've said many, many, many times, it's a big beige blob up on the ridge, and uh it is in need of uh zoning as those kinds of developments are intended to be incorporated into city code at some point in the future, and uh that's gonna be a long process to get that done. Um but it'll it'll start here. So that's when we'll handle that. Great, thanks.
The only thing I had is, yes, splash pad, like I I commented to my wife, I was like, of all the the initiatives or whatever that I've seen in Snoqualmie since I've lived here for five years, like if there is one thing that I ever saw bring no kidding the community together, it was that splash pad, like half of the town was there, so it was awesome to see. Um I think this is probably, you know, as time goes on, this parks and and wreck will will have this mastered or whatever, but I think there was s- there were so many people that did show up that like the trash was overflowing or whatever. I I know we'll get to a steady-state demand level and all that, but no, fantastic, it's so awesome to see it come to fruition, so thank you.
Yeah, there are a couple of little things like uh uh there's the discovery that a lot of mud was getting tracked in.
Yeah, yeah.
So we had to take care of that, that'll be something that will be handled.
Just a free mudslide.
Yeah, there you go, slip and slide. Um and then uh also the shade, um but there are shade structures that are on the way, they just haven't arrived yet.
Did not know that, okay.
So those, some of those predicted, but um we didn't want to hold up the project for that.
No, fantastic, and the weather cooperated beautifully, so.
Yeah, almost too much.
Well, thanks so much, Councilmember Johnson.
Did you ask uh Councilmember Lambert?
Oh, yes, Commissioner Lambert, forgive me.
Commissioner.
No worries, but I have nothing.
Okay, sorry about that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, uh we have minutes uh dated June second, twenty twenty-five. I move that we approve those as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Those are approved. New business, uh looking at the climate element draft again. Um Director Davis.
Thank you, Chair Testman, and the as I'm looking at this, I'm like, well, that's kind of old business, but clearly I messed that up, so, um but we'll we'll just take it in the order it it's coming, and I'd like to uh introduce, well, you he doesn't really need an introduction, but Chris Green is back to talk through the climate element, and he's brought Christina back with him, and so as you may remember, we had Christina give one presentation and Chris give the next, and so now they've come together with a more finalized uh draft of the climate element, so Chris or Christina, whichever one of you wanna share your screen and take it away, we appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and share my screen, and Christina will start the presentation.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you, Mona, for the generous introduction. Makes us feel like the dream team right here.
You're the dream team, yes.
You go on full screen, Chris?
Yes.
And if I could just interject while you guys are figuring out the screen, um I'm hoping that as part of this conversation, we can talk about maybe some of the changes that the planning commissioners are seeing that maybe occurred after our last meeting, and when we had the meeting with the C P A T group, and that you'll kind of cover those differences.
Yes, as it happens, we have an entire slide about that.
Perfect.
Um, sorry to keep you in suspense. Uh while Chris is pulling that up, maybe I'll just get started uh talking a little bit about what you've got in your packet, which I know you all read in detail, all thirteen glorious pages of your draft climate element. Um so I want to really stress at this point that this is a very early draft. We have to have this by the end of June to deliver to Commerce so that the city can get its funding, but at this point, this document is very much intended to experience additional revisions through the end of the year until it is adopted uh later, later this year, uh along with any other comprehensive plan amendments uh with the annual docket. So even though it looks like a fully fleshed-out draft, um it is very much intended uh to to continue being revised, amended, changed, edited to respond to your feedback, general public, city council feedback, everything. Chris, can you go to the next slide, please? Thank you. So what
Is that picture that you have there on the front slide, is that in Snoqualmie? Because it as I'm looking at it, I'm a hard having a hard time getting my bearings. Is anybody else feeling like that? Can you move move it back to the cover slide?
Oh, yeah.
Is that, is that in Snoqualmie?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's outside.
I mean, I see him outside, but then I'm trying to place the buildings, and I'm looking at all the buildings, oh, that's the high school back there. Okay, good. I'm sorry, I was like looking at that, and I'm like, where is that?
It's just a different perspective.
Yeah, it's a different perspective for sure. Yeah, sorry, I wasn't, you know, I just thought I'd bring it up because it was bugging me.
No problem. Um, okay, so just to to walk you through the essentially the table of contents for what you're looking at. Uh we've got the element broken up into three distinct sections, so the introduction has some information that contextualizes climate planning with respect to Snoqualmie and what we have to do with regard to legislative requirements. Then we've got the resilience sub-element and the greenhouse gas emissions reductions sub-element. So three, three primary parts. Within the introduction, we have some information about what climate planning is, uh why we're doing this, the legislative history and requirements from H B eleven eighty-one. Uh we do have a little in four, four now for the interim, bright pink sidebar text that explains the difference between the Climate Commitment Act, which authorized funding for the process that we're that we're going through right now, uh and that also sets statewide greenhouse gas emissions reduction targets from H B eleven eighty-one, which sets out the requirements for each jurisdiction's climate element, so they're related, uh but they are distinct in terms of how we're how we're gonna be proceeding uh with with compliance, uh and having that distinction may be uh helpful. We also have a section about the relationship of this climate element to your existing comprehensive plan and other planning documents. Uh that includes a brief, very brief analysis, couple sentences per element for your comprehensive plan. And then we have a a similarly brief summary of the public engagement that we went through to arrive at the current draft of the climate element. Within the resilience sub-element, we have a summary of all of the hazards that Snoqualmie is potentially vulnerable to uh to in the future. Uh some very specific information about what Snoqualmie's vulnerability looks like within some of the different sectors, uh and then a a graphic that explains the process we went through to plan for resilience and just uh three goals. Uh Chris is gonna talk a little bit about why why they look the way they look, what has happened with the old goals and all of the policies. Uh but at this point, we've got three goals that we are currently proposing. Uh and then we swap on over to section three, the greenhouse gas emissions reductions sub-element. That starts with a summary of greenhouse gas emissions production in Snoqualmie. Uh what are the different sectors that are producing emissions, and which ones are within the city's power to kind of make policy interventions in? Uh that includes the building energy emissions and transportation sector emissions. You'll notice uh one large placeholder, which is our greenhouse gas emissions reduction target. We haven't really talked about that yet. We're gonna be talking about that a little bit later tonight, uh but this is a piece that does need to be filled in before the end of the year. Uh and once we get through kind of this section on emissions production and or the sectors that are generating emissions, I guess is maybe a better way of describing it. Uh we do also have that same process summary. I apologize, I didn't make it onto the slide. Um and then the goals and policies, which are uh I believe pretty much unchanged since the last time. I think we made a couple of wordsmithing updates. Uh but otherwise, those are those are the same as they were the last time you reviewed them. Any questions on what's in there or concerns about what isn't in there before I pass it over to Chris?
Do any commissioners want to make a comment now? No? Okay.
All right.
Ju- I just want to make sure, obviously, what's in our packet varies substantially from what we've seen so far in the PowerPoint. I I don't want to undercut any of the work you've done or whatever, just want to make sure we end up coming back to what's in the packet. Is that, we're gonna, we're gonna get there?
Yes, so this is, um well, you should have, you should have a thirteen-ish page document in your packet that is the draft element.
Yep.
Okay, yes, this is just a brief summary for anybody that didn't make it all the way through their packet.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah. Okay, all right, with that, then I'll hand it over to Chris.
So I'm gonna talk a little bit about the changes that you'll see to the resilience sub-element, and these are, as uh Christina mentioned, we're working towards that review draft, and there's, you know, lots of opportunity to change and refine this, um and so in really asking the commission to make some some major, you know, cuts in the interest of sort of prioritization at the last meeting, um and then talking to the um climate planning advisory team, so a few days later, kind of running the same um draft by them and the initial um kind of markups from the changes, that was on a Monday, and on Thursday, we talked to the um the C P A T, um and got pretty strong feedback about uh natural and cultural resource goals, some of them about them being cut or maybe not being in there, and talking about the connection to the to the statute that House Bill eleven eighty-one put in place and some of those requirements. Um and kind of looking for a way to balance that, but also um cover everything that the city needs to do and kind of reorient things, so in kind of meeting and talking through some different approaches, what you see in the draft on the now is a approach where we can make each of the three main legislative requirements a goal, so one of them's focused around uh addressing hazards, which was um something that came up, and really wanted to make sure we had that connection to the hazards that we spent the amount that, you know, time identifying and uh pretty key driving force behind the sub-element, um but then also looking at one method of streamlining or kind of making these more effective potentially is looked at, there's a lot of action items that were sort of in policies, and so, and a lot of the goals were pretty detailed that we had proposed, and so um basically filtered everything down, um so that goals are, the old goals are policies, and they all fit within uh those three buckets that are the legislative requirements. Um and then there's quite a few policies that talk about doing a specific action, and so there is an implementation um strategy that'll be part of this, that some of those may be more suited for, so that they're things that the city can accomplish and cross off its list rather than, say, ongoing policies that live in the comprehensive plan itself. So again, that's kind of an overview. We have a few slides um later on about um G H G emissions production and setting those targets, but wanted to um kind of go through the what you see in the packet and and have a discussion and answer questions about that, so I can um switch to sharing that on my screen if that would be helpful.
Yeah, I think so.
All right, so this um this is the introduction, but wanted to kind of have it be you know, we can go through it, but like to kind of, if there's
Yeah, let me, let me pull the commissioners. Um as we look at the material in the packet, and I'm thinking basically pages three, all the way through all the way through and including eight, uh so all that contextual information, do commissioners have any questions on that? Uh wanna double-click into any of that? Do we feel good? Um I will say, probably one of the most helpful things that uh was provided in this context, actually two things. The definitions were great, especially, you know, vulnerable populations and environmental justice, so I appreciate that. And then I thought, uh also on that same page, the discussion of the let the 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 legislative action that that motivated this was was super helpful, so thank you for that. Um but having heard no commissioners needing, you know, to really dive into that material, I think our time's best spent, especially given the pretty big changes to actually looking at uh each element, if that works for you.
That sounds good, let's go there. Sorry for the scrolling here. Um and do you mean, you want to go right to goals and policies, I'm assuming?
Yeah, so I'm on page nine. Awesome, and so again, the goals themselves have changed, and then what were originally goals and suggested policies can both be seen in the sub-points, is that accurate, Mr. Green?
Uh yes, yeah, there's a few changes to the, you know, wording of things to kind of make it fit within this. You know, it was mostly mostly a straight kind of filtering of everything sort of dropped, dropped a level, but um some kind of rewording to fit things in there, and then um kind of balancing, I would say, the number of policies, so there's um there's a lot more policies in goal one that speak directly to certain certain hazards or impacts.
Okay, yeah, I know, kind of like the crux of of the commission's position or feedback last time was we wanted to focus on resilience and on responding to the climate change risks that we have identified are uh we're most likely to face, and we wanted to to do so with an approach that um ensures the economic viability of Snoqualmie. Was that pretty mu- and and that's what we were prioritizing, public safety, resilience through planning in an effort to, you know, maintain slash advance our economic well-being, so, okay. Um so with that being said, does anyone have any concerns with what you read ahead of time on on any of the goals? Um so I throw that out there, and then two, uh if there aren't any immediate concerns, uh just want to poll and see if we're good. Just go online by line, do you have an objection, an amplification or not, and then move through, does that work for the commission? Commissioner Muziak?
Yeah, I mean, if we could somehow connect the dots to what we did, you know, at least four hours the last two meetings, because I look at goal one side by side, and last week, the goal one, which we liked, read, you know, look at that one. Enhance emergency preparedness, response and recovery efforts to mitigate risks and impacts associated with extreme weather. And we asked to add wildfire and flooding, other hazards worsen by climate change. And that got really softened to reduce harm to people, property, infrastructure. Um goal one point one on last week, again, we we spent, you know, two meetings, analyze how municipal water system maintains adequate pressure, and had some other stuff to it. I see nothing, nothing there. This was in the policy, not the uh this might look like, so I don't, I don't see the two overlapping that much, quite frankly. I mean, it looks like we've got a whole new set here. And the other thing is, we really wanted to make sure that last week, what was goal number six, which was ensure the local economy is resilient to climate disruptions and fosters business opportunities associated with climate mitigation and adaptation, and perhaps beef that up, and that seems to be completely missing here. So, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm wondering what we did the last two meetings, quite frankly.
And it feels like this iteration has actually, we've lost specificity, which makes it harder to to action and produce results.
Yeah, 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 we were thinking about, you know, transportation, and yeah, we were thinking about a lot of things that we could do, and we're back into this um support emergency preparedness and public facility, I mean, stuff that you can't necessarily do anything about, yeah, so so uh yeah, I don't, I don't see it connected to what we did in the last two meetings. Unless I'm reading it wrong. And I've got them side by side.
Chris, did you, did did you guys keep a note of, because I feel like when we had the C P A T meeting, those policies that were talked about with the planning commissioners didn't actually go away, they were reallocated under different goals, so do you have notes on those?
We we do, yeah.
Okay. Because
Yeah, so this is closer to the version that we looked at, like on uh I guess uh
Thursday.
This this Thursday, yeah.
Chris, did you want to respond to the commissioner's specific comments?
Yeah, so
I could also take a stab at it.
Yeah, I guess um I'll I'll uh I'll pass it off uh to you, but I would say a goal one is really meant to really kind of elevate that concern about um things like emergency preparedness and addressing the hazards directly, so that there's um policies that are actually talking about those um specific hazards. Um the uh the economic um goals are actually um part of goal three, so I think, or the policies are actually part of goal three, so I think there's a little bit um more than what you saw in terms of the economic policies um than last time. But really the movement of things that were really action items out of the policies, out of your, you know, comprehensive plan where there could be dated pretty quickly if you are actually implementing those things to policies that can shape decision-making until your next update.
Yeah, I'll, I'll echo that. So well, let me, let me back up a minute. We, so we took your revisions to CPAT and, you know, in their role as a, a technical advisory body, they, they took a look at the work that we presented and said, hey, this is great, but it seems like it's really focused on the built environment and we're really missing that natural resources and cultural resources piece that we used to have with, I think it was like goals four and five that got cut in the last meeting. As the conversation evolved, it became pretty clear that we could, we could think about grouping built environment focused goals together into kind of one bucket and then natural cultural resources goals together in a separate bucket and then have the, the environmental justice, which is kind of broader, right? Across all of our climate planning work as a kind of a third bucket. So what you're looking at is kind of the evolution of that approach where we do have this goal one that's really focused on built environment, people, emergency response. And if you, if you take a look at policies 1.1, 1.2, 1.3, 1.4, those focus really clearly on the hazards that Snoqualmie is most vulnerable to. So instead of having a general emergency preparedness and response goal and some, some policies that are similarly fairly general, we went with kind of a, a more general goal and then these more specific policies. We did, certainly we did remove some of the, the most actionable policies, as Chris said, to an implementation plan with the idea being that those things are specific enough that you could allocate a budget line item for those, or you could use them as the basis for issuing an RFP. This is like a very specific action that the city would take that's less of a policy direction that would inform decision-making and more of the actual decision has been made on what to do about something. So those things may not be in the policies anymore. They're not gone forever. You're going to see them again with an implementation plan, but we didn't have it really ready for this meeting. So they're, they're going to come back to you, but instead of, instead of being in what is essentially a policy document in the comprehensive plan, they're going to move to an action plan under what we're currently proposing. So that's kind of, I, I hope that helps on, on goal number one. If we scroll down to goal number three, then it is policy 3.4 that talks really specifically about economic development and how we can support local businesses. It looks a little bit different than how it did before, but I think that it talks with, with more specificity than it used to. It talks about climate risk exposure, supporting small businesses, preparing for continuity of operations in the event of a hazard situation.
Commissioner Mrazak?
Well, I mean, we also went from active to passive voice, which is, which is a bit of concern. I mean, I, I just, I, I remember, again, we spent four hours on goal one, all six points. Analyze municipal water systems, support developed community wildfire protection, develop implement, notification alerts, partner with residents, emergency management, Puget Sound Clean Energy. I mean, these were things that we could get our arms around. And I mean, maybe they come out of the actions here, but yeah, I'm not, again, I'm not sure why it is so massively different. Particularly that one, we went over and over and over again, and we liked it. So, yeah.
Commissioner Murphy?
And I think the reason why, in addition to the actionable nature of some of the the things that would follow these policies, we looked, if you look at page, uh, page 11, we're looking, we, this is where we started at the brave beginning, the sources of greenhouse gas emissions, right? They're coming from the built environment. They're coming from transportation. So this was our attempt to really like try to tackle and make the biggest dent on a really tough global problem and how we can handle them locally, right? And where the impact is here.
Just comment. I was talking about the resilience goals, not the greenhouse gases goals. The greenhouse gases goals are pretty more consistent. I was talking about the resilience goal.
I think right.
Point still stands. Yeah.
Uh, yeah, yeah. Okay. Understood. I think that makes sense. But I think looking at, I think what we were trying to tackle was like, where can we make the biggest impact locally here? So and I think the focus on the built environment was like, I think intentional, not like, because we were, you know, I think not looking at other things.
There's a bit of constant, yeah.
Can I have a, a quick, maybe this was in the meetings that took place last week, but I'd love to get more color around some of the cultural elements that were kind of, I guess, put back into this. I'd love to get some of the, hear some of the feedback from the group that had a chance to review what we looked at. Maybe some more specific stuff around that would be helpful for me, because I think that's a, a piece that I'd love to just better understand.
Yeah. You mean like the comments from the, the CPAT and their
Correct. Yeah.
Their review of those. Christine, do you want to talk about that one? Or I can jump in if?
Um, I can, I'll start out on this one. So we, we did hear pretty, pretty directly that cultural resources from, from the, I, I want to be sensitive about this because I don't want to pretend to speak on behalf of the Snoqualmie tribe. But what I took away from our conversation is that cultural resources and natural resources are essentially one and the same. And also that cultural resources tribal considerations are very distinct from environmental justice. And so, you know, jumping off from there is kind of where we started heading down the track of, whoa, these natural and cultural resources could be treated together. And they're also, they're really missing as a, as a component of the resilience strategy. Not only are they cultural resources from the tribe's perspective, but they are cultural resources for Snoqualmie residents more broadly, whether they're affiliated with the Snoqualmie tribe or not. And those are in the perspective of our technical advisory body. Those are important enough considerations to really to have that goal reappear in, in our document. So that's, I guess, kind of the, the genesis of, of where we, where we are at with goal two that talks about both natural systems and cultural benefits with some specific policies, 2.6, 2.7, that talk about cultural and historic resources that do acknowledge the importance to the Snoqualmie tribe.
I got it. Yeah. I think, um, was there any more color around goal 2.6 where it's restore culturally important ecological and landscape resources? Says through partnerships with tribal government. I'm, I'm wondering like, did they give an example of what that might be?
There wasn't. Chris, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think that there was a specific example that, that was cited during our discussions at the CPAT. There was however, a really strong statement that, that natural resources are cultural resources. So while we were talking about ecological restoration, so for example, restoring wetlands or reconnecting flood plains, those are the kinds of things that would support this kind of cultural resources policy.
Yeah, I would, I would guess I would add to that. A lot of that was shared from kind of a tribal perspective or on behalf of the tribe, but it was pretty consistent across the advisory group that what was missing was sort of a resource identification and protection piece of this. And that is right there in the statute as far as like what one of the requirements for the, for the sub-element is. And so you know, part of what we're trying to do is figure out a way to you know, incorporate all of those requirements in a way that's straightforward. And kind of lets people know where those, you know, connections are to the underlying purpose of the legislation.
Yeah, just to clarify, we actually had this in there. The only reason we said to pull it out wasn't against cultural, it was because the actions had us doing a seed bank and a whole native nursery that we didn't think the city was equipped to do. Right? I mean, so, I mean, we like the whole cultural stuff and the way goal two was rewritten. I, I think is, is fine. Yeah. I mean, so we weren't saying we don't want the cultural stuff in there. We're saying we don't want to be on the hook for a seed bank and a whole native nursery. That was the thing that we thought, yeah, that we shouldn't be on the hook for.
Yeah, and I sorry, go ahead. Oh, I think that also kind of speaks to restructuring the policies and action items, because that is, actually, there was a question about what were some specific things that were cited as, you know, cultural resources, the, and where that overlap is between natural resources. And a seed bank specifically wasn't one of them, but you know, native plant species and food sources and things like that was something that was specifically mentioned. And so you know, that's something, as you mentioned, as a, as a policy that's maybe a tough one for the city to, you know, implement or have as sort of an ongoing policy, but it may be something, you know, is a potential implementation action that is one of the ways that a policy could be implemented. Gives a little bit more flexibility to meet that. You know, specific interest, I guess.
Or a different, a different implementation action. You wouldn't be so boxed in.
Yeah.
I, I guess looking at 2.6, I don't think there's any way to tap dance around this, but when we say protect and restore culturally important ecological and landscape resources, what culture are we talking about? Right? Because if we're talking about the culture of Snoqualmie, I think we can pretty easily and quickly get to, you know, what's important ecologically and in terms of the landscape, right? That's when we immediately start talking about the Snoqualmie River and Snoqualmie Falls and even Rattlesake Mountain and all of that, right? Like that, that's, that's easy. We get that. I don't know if we need to get so specific and say, you know, that that must and, and will include tribal governments and indigenous organizations. It should include everyone. We get to the, we get to the right answer, just including everyone. Why do we need to specifically highlight that?
So from my perspective, 2.6 isn't written to be exclusive. I think it's written to highlight the importance of connecting with the Snoqualmie tribe or other indigenous organizations. I don't think that this would preclude you from connecting more broadly with any residents, property owners or other stakeholders. But I don't, I, I don't think that when we're talking about culture, even the culture of Snoqualmie, that that is wholly separate from the Snoqualmie tribe. And I think that's, that's kind of the, the point of this is that this is, this is a, a pretty important voice that we want to make sure is heard in this process. Not that other voices can't be part of the conversation, but that this voice is somebody that we need to make sure we're connecting with.
Yeah, I hear you. And that, that's good feedback, but the, I don't know why they get a special call out versus any other voice that would be essential to this process.
On, um, policy 2.7, it may, that was, that was sort of a, a tough one to write. You know, and it's probably not as specific as 2.6, but it is meant to be kind of a companion piece to that.
Yeah. And 2.7 is, is, is a, is a great example, right? Like what do we want? We want to protect cultural and historic resources, right? That might be vulnerable. And how are we going to do that? We're going to do that through planning and inter-agency coordination. It's not specifying a civic group or any other stakeholder. It's just saying what we want and how we envision getting there. I think 2.6 needs, needs to be changed to reflect what we want and how we're going to get there in a way that doesn't prioritize any stakeholder inclusively or exclusively. I don't know if any other commissioners have a different thought.
I agree with what you're saying.
And let me check, uh, make sure I'm not.
If I could, I think it might be important to, to know that the tribes also are working on their own climate element. And it was brought up in the CPAT meetings that maybe we could collaborate and come up with goals and policies that supported one another. The tribes acknowledged that they are working on their climate element, but they were not ready to share what they were working on at this point. So we heard a lot about meeting environmental justice and that being a requirement of the climate element, uh, which we acknowledged. And I think these policies were to help implement that. But that just kind of gives you some context.
Thank you, Dr. Graves. That's a great point, right? Because one of the things I was wrestling with in the last meeting, especially as we were looking to cut items was, okay, like, are we not taking our legs out from under us in terms of fulfilling the requirements of the law? And so that's why I was so appreciative that these definitions were included, because they provide clarity. Environmental justice, what is it? The fair treatment and meaningful involvement of all people, regardless of race, color, national origin or income, with respect to the development, implementation and enforcement of environmental laws, regulations and policies. I mean, what we had would have addressed environmental justice. So that's why I think
This is more preferential.
It's more preferential and it's frustrating that the changes we saw with specific reasoning were just kind of steamrolled.
Can I understand the relationship between the CPAT and us with regards to this environmental element? Cause I don't understand. Is it? Are they in, making recommendations to us or vice versa? Or?
I think it's just a collaboration between the groups as we're developing the climate element. We have this community, what's the CPAT stand for again? Community Planning Advisory Team?
Climate planning, yeah.
Yeah, climate planning. Sir, thank you. Climate Planning Advisory. They're giving input at the same time, then we're bringing, you know, we've got to, we've got to look at the whole climate element and what's required by state law, but then we run that through them and then we bring the goals and policies here. But then we also, you know, we kind of go back and forth. And so we hear both sides. And so I think it's, I mean, the feedback we're getting tonight is good from the planning commissioners, like do you guys have notes at OTAC? Do you have notes on what the policy was before we moved it to the current 2.6?
I mean, we do. We didn't receive feedback at the meeting that, you know, mentioning tribal or indigenous governments would have been an, an issue. So I just want to kind of point out, you know, we didn't steamroll something that was stated in the previous in a meeting that really wasn't part of the discussion. It was the, I think the practical implementation of the seed bank was the main kind of talking point that came out of that. So yeah, we can look at kind of what the previous version of that was. What we were also trying to do here is you know, recognize you know, recognize that there's statutory requirements um, for what the plan does. And so there's lots of different ways to get to that, but that identifying and protecting those resources was something that was needing to be included somehow. So this is just kind of one suggestion of how to do that.
Please, Commissioner. I mean, again, previously, the culture thing talked about um the uh, basically work that tribe to conserve uh, non consumptive resource, including foods, medicinal plants. Which always could be adversely impacted by climate change. So yeah, I'm kind of with the committee chair testament here is that um it needs to be an all inclusive thing because at this point none of that stuff is detailed. We're not sure what um, the tribe considers important to them. And um, I think we definitely need to have a conversation to make sure it's important to, to both of us. Yeah, and that's not denigrating any of that, just saying let's make sure we're, we're on the same page.
I would also just add that the, our two meetings where we've gone over this and to have a separate meeting with the CPAT and come back and then everything is just thrown into one document without any tracking or reference to what was changed or added or subtracted or why and how we got here is not helpful. It's just not a good way to bring everyone closer together because what we're seeing is not what we gave comments on, which is similar to last meeting where we saw not what we gave comments on. And it kind of feels like we're talking to ourselves.
That's good feedback, Commissioner Kilkens.
Thank you.
It's like, um, so, and that was my worry a little bit, which is why we, you know, I was hoping that we had something that was going to better explain because from what I recall, we just took some of those policies and we just moved them around. And we just condensed the goals down to three goals, but we moved some of those policies around into those goals.
And we prioritized them and they now have been redistributed into three different buckets. And new things have been added and some things have been, I don't know, maybe taken away. It's just, there's no wayfinding for us from where we were two weeks ago or two weeks before that to where we are here. So it feels like we are starting over again. And it's very frustrating from our standpoint here because this is like, why are we here?
And, and just to add to that, um, last time when we're like, okay, we went over all these nine goals for resilience, we were asked to, to shave them down. We were asked to provide comments on that. And now it's just like, well, statutorily, perhaps you guys overstep. Well, gee whiz, okay. But I mean, that's what we're here for.
If only we had a consultant guiding us in this process.
Yeah, I mean, give us the four statutory things we got to hit and we'll go ahead and.
So that's been a slide in most of our presentations. Um, and I do want to remind you as well that we're you're not in the process of adopting language. This is like an early workshopping at this point. And so um, you have an advisory group, you have a consultant, you have this group, you have staff and they're all simultaneously working on and reviewing this. This isn't like a linear, you're not moving towards like a city council presentation within a matter of weeks.
No, but who is ultimately responsible for adopting this? It's the city council, right?
It is.
Yes.
Okay. And so the planning commission is the arm of the city council to do all the heavy lifting to make sure that this is in presentable format and meets all the statutory requirements. And so we're, we're struggling to do our job here because it seems like there's an equal player with the planning commission that is changing things every time we come to sit to the table here.
The, the CPAT is responsible for providing technical guidance and advice on the process, certainly. And we, we are collectively trying to incorporate all of the feedback that we're getting in a way that satisfies everybody who's making comments on it.
Can I, can I ask a question? Uh, the version of the draft, specifically the resilience element that we reviewed last, last uh, commission meeting. That too flowed from CPAT, right? And their technical and, and other expertise, did it not?
They, yes, they did review those goals and policies.
Okay. So is it fair to say then, like if this most recent CPAT meeting had never happened, producing what we have in front of us today? That had we gone forward, made the changes that we recommended in the last uh, session? That that, that plan, that element too, would have been consistent with law and consistent with technical best practices?
That wasn't really the outcome that was needed at that. We're still working towards a review draft. So this isn't something that was going to go to city council or going to a public hearing or something like that in the you know, next couple of meetings. This is trying to develop a draft.
Could I ask, could we go back to the format that we had previously and color code what was there originally, what's required by the statutes and what was requested by CPAT? I believe we had that request last time too.
Yeah, could we do side by side comparison to see like what we had at the last meeting, what we're doing at this meeting and how the different policies overlapped into these more recently revised goals?
And, and to be specific, specific, I think you're the, the side, the size, the side by side comparison would be what we have in front of us today with what we closed out last meeting recommending.
What we were looking at last.
Yeah.
And now where we are, if whatever was changed, so we can see it side by side or in some kind of red line track changes format or color coded, something where we can see where things are coming from.
I'd like to bring in Councilmember Johnson.
I think that what I was going to say was just covered in that last couple of minutes of conversations. I think I'm good.
Okay, thanks, Councilmember.
I think maybe Commissioner Lambert might have, he, I noticed he popped on and then.
Commissioner Lambert, I, I want to make sure I'm not uh, missing you. Is there anything you wanted?
No, we moved on from the topic. It's fine.
Are you, uh, we, we can go back. I, I'd, I'd rather hear your voice.
Um, I, the only thing I was going to say specifically about 2.6 is I, I don't know why we would not include the tribal governments in that statement because I don't know of another governing body that also has some level of jurisdiction over our land, like the, the Snoqualmie area. So like, I think spelling that out particularly would be beneficial just because it's a joint venture. That's kind of was my comment. That's why I could see it specifically identified in that line item, but that's going way back there. And I mean, we can hash that out later.
Yeah, no, that's great. Thankfully you shared that.
Commissioner. We'll give a, a positive. Um, going through the greenhouse gas section of this, it matches almost exactly what we covered the last two meetings. I mean, point by point, sub goal by sub goal, where we said changes, it was changed. So it's the resilience section that um, it's just kind of all over the map.
Whi- which question for OTAC team, was the GHD element uh, approach adjusted as in the same manner as resiliency?
No, the CPAT didn't have any major feedback on the greenhouse gas emissions reduction goals or policies. Those were not, those didn't have any uh, significant edits from you all, just some, some minor adjustments to word choice and whatnot. We really focused primarily on the resilient goals and policies.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yeah, I think that that word may have just clued in there was keep wanting to call him CPAP. It's CPAT?
CPAT, yes. Climate Policy Advisory Team, CPAT.
So are, are they actually supposed to in their um, purview? Edit what the planning commission has been working on or are they supposed to provide uh, input for the planning commission to consider? Because those are two very different things. And I think that if the planning commission had what they had suggested last time and then kind of the, uh, here are the suggestions from CPAT. That might come off a little bit more as a um, uh, as, as a path for workflow that might make a little bit more sense. That's kind of what I feel like I'm hearing from the planning commission.
That is correct.
Yep.
Let, um, it might not be entirely clear from what Chris and I have said. CPAT is giving advice and recommendations to, to staff, to, to the consultant team. And we are the ones that are recommending these updates. So CPAT didn't provide this language. Uh, they provided feedback. And we made these updates and are making this recommendation for you to consider as a way to incorporate both your feedback from your last meeting and the feedback from the CPAT.
Director Davis? Maybe for both you and OTAC. So we started this meeting saying, hey, we're, we're going to transmit this to the state to secure our, our funding. So if that's the case, it's not going to the city council yet. It's not even finalized here. I guess, is it fair to say we have what we need right now? We also have time to come with that side by side comparison in another subsequent meeting. And uh, and ultimately move towards a final product later?
I, I certainly think so. I mean, I think we can certainly go back and revisit the goals and policies under the resilience section and, you know, it is a draft. We have to show, we, we have a strict deadline for the climate grant by June 30th. And then we have to turn in all our deliverables. There, they understand that we're probably not going to finish it because we didn't get all the greenhouse gas data and everything. So they'll put a placeholder for us to finish that or do a final, final version years out, but we were hoping to get at least something adopted this year that we could put into the comprehensive plan. And then in three years, if we want to go back and, you know, use the rest of that grant funding to do more updates, we have that ability to do that. But at this point, we have more time to come back and revisit the goals and policies in the resilience section. Um, sending a draft element to what work we've got done so far isn't a final version.
Okay, that's super helpful. So I guess, so then the goal for me, let me know how you feel, Commission. Is to make sure our feedback is clearly received so that when we do come back and look at this um, the next time we're pretty much ready to, to get, to, to, to have a final recommendation. So does anyone disagree with that or want to add on?
Yeah, just a clarifying question. So whatever we decide to kind of move through tonight, that's not going to be like represented as like Snoqualmies or like I'm wondering, yeah, it's not going to be represented as like Snoqualmies, like climate element because other approvals need to take place subsequently.
Well, and the planning commission hasn't even recommended.
We haven't recommended it. The city council hasn't recommended it. Okay.
It's still a work in progress and this is basically where we stopped in order to meet our deadline for the.
It transmitted the draft to the state. Okay.
Yes, but it's still a work in progress.
Right.
Yeah.
Vice Chair, Commissioner Maruzia?
Yeah, and I just want to reiterate, I think the greenhouse gases, which I know there's a lot of statutory stuff around there, I, I think we're, we're just about there.
Yeah.
Agreed.
And if you think the word resilience and again, how the previous goes, where the idea is, yeah, we want to be a strong community that can handle the climate change. So that does seem to me 80 plus percent would be on built structure because I think that was, and, and this shifted it too far away from built structure in addition to not referencing what we said. Um, so, yeah. By all means, let's go to the state there, but when we talk about resilience, just think of the word, it's, yeah, making sure our community, our joint community, right, with whatever governance we have, is resilient to what comes in the next 20, 30 years of climate change. Right? And then I think that's a better way to approach it than than too abstract because resilience means there's some things we do now and there's some things that we're addressing of what we have built now. So I, I think we went too far away from that.
And not to beat a dead horse here, but like, we just got to get the process right. And that's just basic red lines of documents that we can see what changes were made. Does the CPAT have edit, edit ability like, or is it just advisory? We should be able to take and consider all of their feedback. But I just don't know what that is by looking at this document. So I think um, it, you know, having a chance just to revisit that and make sure that we know what we're, um, what we're evaluating and who's kind of giving the recommendation and just some transparency there would be great. So I know, and I know we've already talked about that a bit, but I feel like we, unless we get that right, I don't think we're ever going to make the forward progress.
All right. So I would turn it over to the OTAC team. Do you feel like you have what you need to set us up for success for the next session? Is there anything we can elaborate upon? Anything that you need from us?
Um, I would say we're probably pretty well set up. We've got some great feedback here. There's going to be, you know, additional community engagement um, taking place on this. So um, this is really helpful for us. We're basically looking for you know, as much feedback as we can get from different groups, um, including the planning commission, staff, the CPAT, et cetera, on, on this draft. And then, you know, you'll have a more engagement and, and then the adoption process. So I think this is um, really helpful for us to kind of get different points of view. And I would agree, you know, you'll want to see uh, and you should see a red line that kind of shows the changes between the different drafts um, as they, you know, continue to evolve.
Director Davis?
Uh, Chris, you had mentioned that tonight we needed to know what the targets were for the greenhouse gas emissions. And I noticed you had that highlighted
Yeah.
on page 10 of the document. So do we need to talk about that tonight?
Before we move on, I see that Commissioner Lambert has a hand up.
Please, Commissioner Lambert.
Can, just one thing when we do come back with, can we get some specificity on the level of like that we are actually, or the the degree to which, what our priorities and goals should be? Like, are we getting down on the very granular? Because like, for example, the 1.9 where it's encouraged the integration of backup power and distributed energy systems, like we're talking about like building micro grids inside of the city of Snoqualmie, which is very specific for, you know, to deal with outages because we don't have control of the PSE lines. But then in the same one, you guys removed the, you know, testing to make sure that our water system has the ability to maintain pressure during wildfires. You took that part out and made it a very broad goal of like developing wildfire prone areas should incorporate uh, fire safe site design, which you don't even identify that we are a wildfire prone area. So like even inside of the goals, it's like, are they broad or are they specific? You know, what level are we trying to hit between all of these?
I think that's a, that's actually, that's a great example because that was one that we looked at and said, um, you know, having a policy that you're, you're going to run a test is not, and I know some communities do this, but it's in a comprehensive plan, this means that you have a policy that's to do a certain task. And if you do it in year one or year two, um, then you have this outdated policy that lives in your comp plan from then on out. And that's really an implementation um, thing, whereas something that's saying, when we make these decisions, we make them based on this policy is something that you know, the idea is that that lasts 10 to 20 years while the comprehensive plan is in effect.
Anything else on that, Commissioner Lambert?
Uh, no, thank you.
Commissioner Lambert did jog my memory. I, one issue I did have with the GHD element is looking at 4.3, I thought we specifically said, like, we didn't want to put the city on the hook for trying to do something that essentially is out of there. for trying to do something that essentially is out of their control. So it says require all city owned buildings to be powered completely by renewable energy by twenty twenty nine. That that actually ended up getting more specific.
I think the feedback was that it was publicly owned buildings and that the city may not necessarily have control over what other public agencies do, but the city can certainly you know, subscribe to renewables and its own buildings.
It was, it was the word require.
Yeah.
He's right.
Courage or something softer.
Yes, I remember that too.
Okay.
We'll make sure that's updated for the next draft.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Director Davis, anything else before we close this one out?
Uh,
Oh, the targets?
The greenhouse gas.
Yes.
Then do you guys have more to discuss about greenhouse gases?
Um, so, yeah, part of the process is setting a a target and you noticed in the draft that's not specified what that target is. There's a few different ways to kind of go about doing that. So let me bring this slide up here for you. Yeah. So there's a requirement that the city set greenhouse gas emissions targets. We've talked a little bit about how some of the requirements are maybe not super specific, but they tell you certain things that you need to do. Um, in this case, they tell you you need to set a target. There isn't really any kind of guidance in terms of the target should be this much. Or anything like that. So there's a lot of at least, you know, kind of in the um, in this draft and at this stage of how these climate elements are done, a lot of different options. Some considerations that we looked at that might be helpful in setting that target. There's core emissions versus community wide emissions. So core emissions tend to be things that um, city governments are more able to um influence through policy or law or actions. Versus, you know, we talked about aviation being the prime example of one, like the city can't can't really do anything about that. Setting targets by different time intervals and then looking at um sectors. And so you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be a target that's like thirty percent of everything by this date or thirty percent of our core emissions. It can be something like thirty percent of transportation or um, ten percent from buildings or, you know, there's, there's different ways to um, kind of do that. And so just a little on the core emissions, these are sixty three percent of the overall total. I would argue that that doesn't mean that there's sixty three percent of the emissions that the city can just you know, influence, you know, entirely, but um electricity, natural gas usage, so primarily in buildings, vehicles, and then solid waste generation and disposal. We've talked about that's, that's one that Snoqualmie doesn't have a huge uh source of emissions from that and and it's going down pretty quickly in the last four years. Um, so really those first three are probably good focal points. And so you see with the goals, you know, there's really this focus on more efficient transportation system. Having buildings and infrastructure use less energy and then carbon sequestration. And so those are potentially areas to focus on. But in terms of setting those reduction goals, there really is a pretty broad broad set of policies. It's basically a percentage that you would select.
Commissioner Murphy? Uh, my apologies if we hit on this last time or in previous meetings, but uh, what I'm I'm looking at the difference in CO2 emissions in buildings. I'm sorry, in built environment between twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three. And there's a pretty like sizable drop um there. Can can we just, can you give another quick explainer for that? I feel like we hit on this once before, but I think it's super relevant for as we're setting the goal here.
Yeah, yeah, it's a great um, great piece of information to kind of think over like essentially, a lot of, there's, there's two main things with electricity that changed in terms of the emissions from electricity. One was that PSE switched to a lot more renewable energy sources. So um, that's a really good example of something in this case turned out to be good, was kind of outside of the city's control. But, you know, made a pretty big difference. And then um, the second and not, not nearly as much as the switch in the um energy sources, but there was an increase in basically subscriptions to green energy through PSE by Snoqualmie residents. Um, natural gas did go up a little bit, but not not nearly enough to offset that decline with a um, electricity.
So I have a quick follow up and then I'd like to hear actually, I mean, if he's willing, I'd love to hear Commissioner Lambert's view on this because I feel like he's got some subject matter. Don't make an expertise here. But do we have reason to believe that that decline will continue? Was that anomalous? Um, you know, obviously it's hard to get a sense of trends going just one year over year, but um any hypotheses in terms of like, are we on a downward slope or is that just going to pop right back up again? Uh, uh, I guess that would be for um, first the consultant and then uh Commissioner Lambert, just general thoughts if you were able to provide some.
Um, on the, uh, uh, I would say it's probably a general trend. I don't know if it could be expected to be you know, decreased that dramatically on a regular basis, but in that short of amount of time.
God, so we can't count on, that that's a kind of a maybe a one off dip and we shouldn't necessarily count on something like that. In in the out years.
Yeah, I mean, it could continue kind of slow and steady.
Yeah.
Um, some other factors that would be at play are, um, you know, there is, there is a new energy code that does require a lot more energy efficiency. So as new buildings or major renovations that fall under the new energy code come online, um, they are going to represent a much smaller increase. Um, but at the same time, if you do get large developments, uh, like may or may not be um, in your future, uh, they, you might see a bump um in those kinds of emissions. Uh, depending on what happens with natural gas, um, you know, those emissions may start to taper off uh if if new buildings are primarily going to be all electric. Um, but I don't I I think that natural gas will still remain an option, if I'm remembering correctly.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert, did you have thoughts?
No, sorry.
I think you're speaking, but it's not coming through.
Sorry, I was in a different window and I couldn't find it again. I I that that credit is going to be or that that energy or I, let's see. That green energy credit will be very much dependent on PSE and where they're able to source their power over the next decade, which is very open to what the powerful profile looks like in Washington state, depending on the um massive increase in the amount of electricity that we use statewide. So it's, it's tough to say. I mean, again, that's, you know, I don't, I don't know about relying on that to reach our goals. Um, given that we have no control over over that. Even even to the point that PSE has, you know, only limited control, like they have a lot more and they can, you know, they do source their own power and they can build wind and solar. Um, but a lot of it, they're buying it off the market from, you know, California, British Columbia um, and other places as as, you know, more people are demanding power. So I, it, I don't know, I don't like using that as the the way that we're reducing our carbon emissions. I think we should focus on things that we have a lot more control over in in my personal opinion.
Thank you. Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, just one other thing to consider is um, when uh on this specific topic is as the uh increasing use of AI, which is this massive drain on power and how we're actually going to power the increasing demand over the next ten years uh is a wide open question. Um, so, yeah, it could be that the power profile does change rather dramatically in the opposite direction to just meet that demand. Uh, so who knows? I mean, of course, we're just trying to look into our crystal balls. So I I think essentially, yeah, focusing on the, you know, what what can we do here is probably the best way forward on that.
Oh, and okay, uh, Councilman Member Johnson brings up a very good point. Um, because like PSE is raising their rates um, with all, pretty much all other utilities in Washington state. And as those rates go out up, um, people will typically go off of, you know, spending the extra money to to go with green energy. So I don't know about counting on on people continuing to make that decision.
It also might change behavior.
Yeah. That's true as well, which could reduce energy quite significantly.
Commissioner Murphy, did you saw some?
Yeah, have we, um, this may be a question for staff, but have we set, has Snoqualmie, city of Snoqualmie ever had to set GHG reduction targets previously? Or is this the first time we're doing this? Or have we, are we revisiting like prior goals in the past or? I'm, I, the reason I ask is I'm kind of do, you know, and doing some research for this. Other cities um, nearby have set their own GHG reduction targets in prior like climate action plans and like the numbers are pretty staggering in terms of like fifty percent reduction by twenty thirty, seventy five percent reduction by twenty forty, ninety five percent reduction by twenty fifty. And this is just from the city of Issaquah's um website. And that's pretty
Ninety five percent reduction?
That's the city of Issaquah published in their twenty twenty one uh climate action plan. But that's not, that's, uh, city of Sammamish had a very similar um, similar numbers in their last, it was, they were it changed slightly, but anyway, I I'm just trying to get some more context behind what we're doing versus others and maybe what we've done previously um from a GHG reduction target standpoint.
A tag on question potentially.
Vice Chair Kukup.
Uh, I am, I feel like we might have covered this in the way back when this element was first introduced. But what is the metric that we're tracking that we're reducing in total? What is, is it like parts per million? Is it?
I think it's ton, ton CO2. Is that CO2?
Consumption?
Should be, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
And I, and I don't know that we've tried, I don't think we have tracked this before. I think the larger cities did their climate element first. Um, Chris, are you aware of like, have you worked with any of the other bigger cities in the King County area that would help us to know how they've come up with the numbers that they've?
Yeah. So they're really looking at different things. So this um climate element specifically, community wide emissions that are from uh, land use and transportation is the kind of the main focus, but it's looking community wide. So GHG that is generated within the community. A lot of previous climate action plans that cities did, including Snoqualmie um, prior to House Bill eleven eighty one. Um, really focused on city operations. So what cities could do like their fleets, um, energy sources, things like that. And so, um, there's some pretty big numbers and I believe Snoqualmie, um, not through the climate action plan, but through um, King County had kind of put some numbers out there for city operations and reducing those emissions at some point in the past. But when you see these numbers like Issaquah, it's like seventy percent reduction or something like that. They're not saying that they're going to you know, reduce the general public submissions by that much, but like, but their city as a corporation, essentially, yeah.
Would reduce that.
Yeah, I feel like whatever we decide on this, what I would like to understand is what would that be as like a reduction per resident or reduction per household or something that takes it out of the abstract and into like this is what each person would be expected to sort of do and how we might get there.
Yeah, can I build on that? Because s- so the first question I had is, okay, what's, what's our overarching goal? Is it net zero? Probably. And if so, by what year, right? And so I think we get a framework, obviously, from the uh Climate Commitment Act summary, right? The forty five percent reduction by twenty thirty, seventy percent reduction by forty and ninety five by fifty. It sounds like those other bigger cities are kind of sounding like they just adopted that whole scale. But my question would be, what, what proportion of Washington state's CO2, annual CO2 emissions does Snoqualmie represent? And then backwards mathing from that, if we say, okay, we want to support Washington's goal at those benchmarks, but we want to do so commensurate with our contribution to those, to those levels. Uh, I would think we would be able to backwards math into, okay, if we know that sixty five or I I'm sure I had that slightly off, sixty five percent from the built environment and electricity, okay. You know, that would allow sub targets to be calculated off of that, again, feeding ultimately into what we represent to Washington state. I I feel like anything else would just be us just throwing darts at a board.
Yeah, making up numbers.
Yeah. Any, any thoughts from the OTAC team or others? Let me check.
Yeah, I would say, I mean, the Climate Commitment Act, when I would, I wouldn't necessarily connect those numbers from other cities to the the Climate Commitment Act or their House Bill eleven eighty one um, targets. I think those are really for their city operations. The Climate Commitment Act is setting those targets statewide. So all of that stuff that you, you know, see in the greenhouse gas emissions inventory that um, you don't have a lot of control over. Essentially, that's the state. I'm I'm way oversimplifying it, but that's the state saying like, hey, we're going to do this broadly. You're really looking for through a comprehensive plan and which is why it's the um requirement specifically says transportation and land use. You're looking for, and this is very built environment geared in this, in this section, um, you know, you're looking for what your comp plan can do. It doesn't have to, you're not going to, you're not going to meet the um climate commitment targets that the state has set for itself in Snoqualmie simply by adopting policies in your comp plan. This is really looking at built environment and transportation.
Yeah, hu- hundred percent. I I think you hit the nail on the head. We want whatever we recommend as a target to be realistically achievable. Right? So like a perfect example that that came up earlier in this conversation is electrifying the city's fleet of vehicles. Okay, well, my first question would be, what percentage of those built environment emissions are accounted for by the city's fleet? Because let's say we have the wherewithal to electrify one hundred percent of the city's fleet. Okay, well, then now we could account for taking out X amount of metric tons of CO2, right? That would allow us to build a realistic goal, I guess. Hopefully I'm explaining that well.
But aren't we just going to spike electricity too?
You know, I don't know. Well, and so that begs the question, well, that begs the question, do we want to recommend that the city um, look to uh carbon offsets as part of its strategy, right? Since we believe there's no actual path to achieving that level of decarbonization in our operations? I don't know, right? Councilmember Johnson?
Yeah, I guess I I I'm again a little confused on what the end goal here. Is it again to figure out the number of tons of CO2 that could be reduced by a certain year? Is that the ultimate idea?
A- as I see it in the packet, it's to just come up, yeah, with a percentage reduction in metric tons of CO2. Is that, is that right, OTAC?
It's uh missions related to transportation and land use.
Yeah, but in terms of like percentage versus absolute, there's there is a a specific requirement. You could do it, I think, either way.
Okay, it is helpful that it could be a percent rather than actually getting metric tons. But I I guess what what I'm kind of trying to wrap my head around is without any sort of specific framework for how cities can implement. Uh, this, uh, this seems like a a minimum, a several-year graduate project. Where a student would actually like go and publish this finding in a journal after doing a bunch of comprehensive modeling. So um I I guess maybe either this is something that is that massive. Or uh we really need to 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 focus a little bit more on some very specific things. Um, to kind of narrow things down, because this can branch out forever. Um, it it's it's essentially endless uh where this could go. Um, yeah, I think I think we need some focus probably in some way. Thanks.
Commissioner Muzia?
Just to put a fine point on those, all these comments is, we need an objective measure of goodness, whatever that is. Of when when we would know we'd succeed objectively, what would that look like?
So I mean, I think it's fair to say we're not in a position tonight to put a twenty thirty goal or a twenty forty goal. Let me check Zoom here.
I don't even know if we can finish this conversation by twenty thirty.
I would support King County's uh efforts and and to the best of our abilities.
Is this also where we're just putting in a placeholder for further conversation?
Hmm, that's a good question.
I guess uh another another thing then would be, are there cities of a similar size who have done this exact component? That we could look at as kind of like a framework, or or are we treading water first?
Pretty much.
You're, yeah, you're first out of the gate here.
We're the first out of the.
Why we did that, I'm not really sure. Like, I would have waited a little bit and let other cities, smaller cities kind of vet this out a little bit.
So there's really no standard for us to be compared against if the city of Snoqualmie comes up with something being the first. And like, nope, that's not good enough. It's like, okay, thanks, but let's see what is then.
Actually, I think that's a really good way of putting it.
I think one thing that might be helpful, as I'm looking at this figure one on page nine. Um, we talk about in twenty twenty-two. Uh, we had a hundred and thirty-three thousand three hundred and twenty-nine metric tons of carbon dioxide. What did we have in twenty twenty-three? If my math is right, it's one twenty-one to seventy. I think it would be good to call out those two numbers, and then I'd be curious, what is that percentage spread out over a year? I didn't bring my phone, so I don't have my calculator. Um, and then is that a realistic expectation to take? Because that's a to to Commissioner Murphy's point, that's a pretty significant drop drop from one year to the next. But if you were trying to figure out what that looked like in twenty thirty and twenty forty. I mean, is that maybe how the bigger cities came up with such a big number?
So it's um it's a seventeen percent reduction, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three.
So it's their capital projects, which we have no control over. I mean, I'm inclined to give a smaller number, I feel like this is that same conversation we keep having, which is, I think when you throw out like. Ninety-five percent reduction, it's like, how on earth would you ever accomplish that if you actually plan on accomplishing it? Or are you just doing really big numbers that sound great? Um, because I think if we say ninety-five percent, we go, okay, so how would we get there? And it's like, well, I think we'll have to move out of Snoqualmie, right? Like, it's the only way. So I I would be more inclined to have what we feel like is a realistic, also realizing that, you know, we're in the future right now. It's already twenty twenty-five, so uh but it's five years to twenty thirty, like, how much could we actually really? Conceptualize and begin to implement and actually see the benefit of before twenty thirty? I mean, I think I would be happy with like ten percent.
Would be huge, yeah.
Yeah, especially if it was actual controllables for us, not just benefactory of PSE investment. If we actually put some policies in place that made some trending changes in behavior. Um, and then, I don't know, twenty forty, we can make that one up. Call twenty percent.
Yeah, well, that's massive innovation.
I know, it's a.
Conservation will get us big numbers, yeah.
I feel like, uh, don't we have a more deep, maybe we saw it in other sessions, but don't we have a more detailed, no kidding, GHG accounting? That would allow us to look at line items to figure out like realistic targets at the line item level?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, I don't know, I I would submit that's the way to go.
Yeah.
Let 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 the numbers tell us what's achievable.
But for now, I'd say we're just, we're just putting a placeholder in, right? That, okay, I really don't want to get that wrong. I would say like ten percent. And then let's actually try to make a plan.
Ten percent by twenty thirty and twenty percent by twenty forty?
Do you have, you have something, Commissioner Muzia?
I was gonna say the smallest that we can still get the grant and then figure out how to do it, because at this point, we're throwing darts.
Well, the grant isn't based on what we put in, it's just that we put in, right?
Yes, that we just could be our climate element.
Yeah.
Ten, ten, twenty, you can see it way too, yeah.
Right, maybe eight, eight.
So. And I, I'm sorry, it's it's definitely, I mean, you can throw out a number in there too, but this is. We just want to have this chance to kind of talk through like what some of the considerations and what some of your ideas are. Um, and we're happy to put a number in there, but I don't want that to like. Uh, just be on your shoulders here for the next few minutes of like, what's the city's target going to be or something like that? It's it's definitely a. Um, process.
Yeah, no, if I if I hear the commission properly, it sounds like, and let me know if you you object. But it sounds like we're comfortable with a draft being transmitted that says ten percent reduction in twenty thirty. Twenty percent targeted for twenty forty. We want to come back as part of the these, certainly the follow-on discussion about the resiliency element, but I guess also about GHG. Uh, to look at the line item level from the inventory to actually, you know, realistically target. Reductions that can be achieved. Anyone disagree? All right, so yeah, that's our feedback on GHG.
Great, thank you. I think that's a good approach.
Awesome. Anything else, Director Davis? Okay. Thank you, team. I know it's a lot, you do this, you do the CPAP meetings and everything in between, so we do appreciate it.
Thanks, we appreciate the feedback, it's really good uh information and it's going to make it a a better plan.
Uh, so just talking through next steps, uh. Can we anticipate that we'll dial down a little more on the resilience goals and policies? At a future meeting, or how do you, I mean, I know we've got to kind of have a draft and then. But we can still work on this a little bit this year, I believe.
Yeah.
And we need, we need, we were looking for tracking, yeah.
Yes, so we'll, what what's our timeline to get that back? I guess I'm just trying to, I I feel like we should do it sooner than later while it's all fresh in our minds, not wait till September.
Yeah, that's, I don't think we have any objections with that.
OTAC?
So we'll need to talk through that, probably Mona, because I don't anticipate that being before June thirtieth.
No, because we wouldn't even have another meeting until July seventh. Would you be ready to bring that comparison back at the July seventh meeting?
Um, I think we could, yeah.
Yeah, I think we'll, we'll need to talk about it, I we could, we could have the material ready for that packet. And then, um, since the. The grant funding expires on June thirtieth, so we'll just need to discuss. Um, I think the logistics of that meeting with you, Mona.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
All right, all good. All right, thank you, team, we appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Good night.
All right, get oriented here, so that concludes our new old business of the climate element draft for now. Next item is planning commission housekeeping. So I uh in in planning for this week's meeting, had a conversation with Director Davis. On um adjust, potentially adjusting, so this is looking for feedback here. Uh, adjusting the flow of the meetings and also looking for your thoughts, Councilmember Johnson. Um, but in an effort to, one, provide the contextual information on the. On the happenings in the city and all that, that I think the commissioners are looking for. Um, while still keeping the flow of the meeting efficient and certainly the execution of the meeting efficient. My proposal is that we potentially move um, adjust the agenda. Uh, so that the council liaison report would actually be uh just prior to. Items of planning commissioner interest, and also that we would add um a period of time for Director Davis to provide. Updates on the other boards, commissions and and all that, anything she sees pertinent to the planning commission. But uh I just wanted to see if any commissioners had any thoughts, any objections?
Sounds good.
All good, I don't see your hand up, Commissioner Lambert, just want to make sure you're good if we make some changes.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, and then Councilor Johnson, mm, in my mind. You're here, you're here for the whole meetings regardless, right? So from my perspective, I would think it would, it would be six and one and a half dozen in the other. If you did the council liaison report at the end vice the beginning of the meeting, but.
Yeah, uh, if I needed to leave early, as I sometimes do for typically family matters, got little kids at home and all that. Uh, then uh I would just send the chair an email, and you usually have your email open anyway.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Okay.
Usually back there and just go, hey, I gotta leave early. Uh, and then I'll defer to the planning commission if they want to suspend business for me to do that real quick. Or um just forego it for the week.
Okay.
You know, sometimes to rally a conversation can be pretty frustrating too, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll defer to to the judgment of the the commission and the chair at the time.
Okay.
That's fine.
Perfect, thanks for your flexibility. Listen, anything, I think that was it, right?
I think that was it, yeah, we talked about um. Like under maybe future agenda topics, having like an area for like more of a department report where I could.
That was your deal, yeah.
Advise the planning commission of things going on and just kind of give an update of what's going on in the department. Um, maybe new projects coming in, special special events coming up. Um, just things that we've heard from other committee meetings or in the department head meetings, just to kind of keep you apprised. So um Councilmember Johnson does a great job of updating you on the council topics. Um, but like maybe you might be interested to know, you know, about other things going on. So new projects coming in or um maybe new design review board things that are coming your way. It's that type of thing.
Perfect, okay, so you'll see some of those changes uh next meeting, so thank you, com- commission. All right, that concludes our housekeeping, no old business items, future agenda topics, is there anything you wanted to add here? Uh, Director Davis, all good?
I don't have anything right now, I mean, we're still working on the um work plan and trying to kind of refine what we're trying to get done. In the second half of the year, so hopefully I'll have some more information to share at the next meeting.
All right. All right, and with that being said, I move that we conclude uh the planning commission meeting for June sixteenth at eight forty-seven. Oh, oh, items of planning commission. Okay, let me uh, let me move that we amend the agenda to include items of planning commissioner interest, can I get a second?
Second.
And all in favor, aye? All right, and Vice Chair Kukup?
Done for me.
All right, Commissioner Muzia?
I've got three things. First question. And it's, it's not meant to be hostile, how is OTAC being paid?
Yeah. They bill us for the work they're doing, we pay them, and then I will send a request for reimbursement to Commerce. For, out of the grant, so the grant money from Commerce is what's paying for OTAC's time.
Is it by milestone or by hour?
It's. Well, I think they charge, I think they have certain um tasks that they need to to complete as part of the. The climate element, and I bet I think they charge an hourly rate to get those tasks completed.
I I'd like to look at that incentives, because it feels like they're incentivized to answer a direct question in the most obscure manner. Possible before they roll back to it, and it it feels like, because I felt this way.
Yeah.
You know, for at least the last couple of meetings, that they really seem to stretch out something that we could close on. Time-wise, and so i- if there's a way to make that more milestone-related, that'd be helpful.
Probably not for this contract, but.
Yeah, probably not for this contract, and I do see your point here. Um, it, I'm struggling a little bit, because we have, a lot of cities have one planning commission meeting a month. And we have two a month, and so it seems like I'm constantly just preparing packet materials for the next week's meeting. Which I know is part of, well, I mean, I think we've got a lot of work to get done, so. I mean, we're filling the planning commission agendas, if we, if there would be nothing really to discuss, or I felt like we could move it. You know, more things to have a more productive meeting once as opposed to splitting out small things twice a month. I mean, I would certainly suggest that to the chair when we have our check-ins. But I, yeah, I would agree that.
Definitely felt like these last three meetings could have been one long meeting.
Well, and the problem I'm.
Follow-up where they actually incorporated our comments. Flash communicated what was going on, and then we said, yep, that's what we said, and then we go from there as opposed to. We had had the same meeting about three times.
Well, in this last, after the last meeting, I did reach out to OTAC and I said, look, like, we need to talk about this more before we. Because what's happening is the packet materials are due to the city clerk by noon on Thursday before the meeting. I'm getting the materials from OTAC like that morning, and so it's not giving me enough time to review them to kind of offset some of that. And so we tried it a little differently this last week, where we, I actually met with them on Thursday morning. I met with them on Thursday morning and we went through everything. But I said, you guys need to be really prepared to explain how after the last meeting. And when we had the CPAP meeting, you consolidated all this into three goals and moved all the policies around. And they said they would, and like I I, to your points tonight, I can see why it would be really confusing. If you weren't sitting in the CPAP meeting, hearing the conversations around. Um, you know, some of the members being really upset that all the cultural and natural resources goals were taken out. And that we were um not complying with the environmental justice requirements of, you know, the climate element.
That was misrepresented though.
Yeah, I don't think that's.
And we said, and we tried, you know, we did say, like, we didn't take them out, we moved them around. And I, you know, I tried to point out, like, this goal may have appeared to have come out, but that's because we broke down the policies under that goal. And moved them, but then what it boiled down to was, OTAC said, wait, I think there's a better way to handle this. And it's, I think we need to make the goals more generalized and kind of turn around. I said, well, you better be prepared then to explain that with to the planning commission, because we've spent two meetings now. Dialing down on these goals and policies, but then it's just a matter of timing too, so.
But also communication, because I think that what we did wasn't communicated well to the CPAT. And then what they, the information they gave wasn't communicated well back to us, and it's also a little confusing in terms of who is. Like, it seems like we're all funneling the information into OTAC, and then they just whooshed and then put it back in front of us in a different way. Because you said earlier, it's a collaboration, like, we're not really collaborating. we're not really collaborating right now, we're just ping ponging.
Yeah, I I I'll take no small amount of responsibility for for some of these issues. I I was, the last CPAP meeting was scheduled for last Thursday from one to three. I I worked for a living and I, we were actually having a team summit that whole week. And so I wasn't able to represent the planning commission's perspective in what ended up being a pretty important meeting. So no small part of that lack of communication is is on me. So I apologize.
But I also think we have paid consultants that are meant to.
Well, and that's the thing, right? You know, like, we we've got a lot of stuff we're working on right now. And so we're paying them to hear, to hear what the feedback and then to do the work. And so I'm relying heavily on them to do that because I can't do all the things. As much as I'm trying.
But even the amount of work it would have taken you, let's say that you got this packet on Monday and had time to review it before the packet needed to put together for us, which obviously was impossible with the timeline. But just the way that that was presented would have been a ton of work for you. It would be a ton of work for anybody who didn't draft it.
Right, right.
To track what was going on there. It's just, that's, it's poor form.
Yeah, I I I hear you. So.
Yeah.
And I, and to, I mean, I I understood what they were just asking me to because, so they can't bill me past this meeting because we have to turn in all those deliverables. And so I'm asking them, hey, can you give us a memo or some kind of something to show us what changed between the last meeting and this meeting? And they're like, well, we'll have to talk logistics. Like, how are we going to get paid? Because you won't be able to bill our time to the grant for that work.
Maybe they can just backcharge it for all the.
We have, I have to have all the deliverables in by June thirtieth.
I have a pretty solid billable if you want to. I can bill them back.
Yeah.
At any rate, having been on the firing line, and I suspect many of us here have been on the firing line, having to do things like this, we have to track things and negotiations and contracts, stuff like that. People would have been thrown out or fired or not paid for this last couple of weeks. I mean, it's, it's, it's a big deal. And we're all being very professional about it, but it's a big deal how big the miss is of just following along what we're trying to do. And you're asking us, all volunteers, to sit here and go through this. It's just like, at least, at least acknowledge what we did and track it from week to week. So, all right, I asked how they're paid and I think getting overpaid for what they're providing.
In all honesty, I need to pull the task order because I wasn't involved in that, but it it does bring up a good point. Like, maybe I should pull the task order and see what those deliverables should entail, how many meetings we had figured into that. And so I'll, I'll look into that.
If it's presenting at least an hour and a half to the planning commission, we 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 should take that out.
Well, and is there work that's meant to be done in between? Because I'm not seeing that.
Yeah, okay.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yeah. So I definitely hear what the planning commission is saying. I I'm starting to get just slightly nervous about things like performance review and stuff like that. And is that what the planning commission is engaging in? Say again?
Well.
Performance review.
Uh, when was that, when would that be discussed otherwise?
Absolutely. I think that perhaps staff could take that feedback and maybe very seriously. And take back to state administrator and et cetera. Yeah.
Yeah, and I can, and I can certainly do that and work with them to try to fix all this and make it right. So.
I I I think that the, in my opinion, I think the planning commission has been loud and clear in terms of their opinion on the matter. And and hopefully the administration will take that under some serious advisement.
Okay. Are you good or?
No, he's not, he's not done, finished.
Yeah, I got, I got, second thing.
Keep going.
Other two, I think you're a lot easier than that non-hostile question I asked. Councilmember Johnson brought this up and Commissioner Lambert brought this up. And it's kind of in the background, but if if you look, you don't scratch Service Watch, the massive increase in AI right, is driving a massive increase in electricity. And all across the country, people aren't talking about, ooh, let's incrementally go up ten or twenty percent. They're talking multiples, two X, three X. Electricity, talking about putting stuff in space. I think the governments need to catch up with that. And I I'm just kind of throwing out there in general and saying, okay, this is happening. And a lot of it's happening right here in King County, the San Lary. There's big AI data centers going up like crazy. And I I think, I think the local governments and the state government, I think everybody just needs to get on board with, this is already happening right now. How does this impact us? Because it's going to be a bigger impact than a lot of things we're talking about. So anyway, that one.
Well, and that goes to like looking at the inventory on a line item basis, right? If if on a line item basis, we saw, you know, X change in electricity or CO2 generated from electricity, and we can spell out, okay, our assumption is because of AI, Snoqualmie's electricity consumption will increase by X amount. We think our CO2 emissions will increase by X amount. Then we can say, okay, well, on that front, we're only going to be able to achieve a two percent CO2 reduction by thirty and whatever the case.
There needs to be other innovation.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just think the AI power demand, the government's ought to catch up to. And it's, it's a big change from two or three years ago. Third one is meant to be a little tongue in cheek. Remember, we talked about, but wouldn't it be cool to have it in and out here? Right? So so in and out doesn't work, right? However, however, wouldn't it be cool if the Bartels, if a Trader Joe's came into the Bartels?
Oh, I'd love that.
So again, I don't know.
Get TJ's, though.
Well, I don't know. But but I mean, if you think it's something that would be really cool, that'd be nice to plant here that would really draw a lot of traffic. Just throwing that out there, I think that'd be pretty cool.
So we've looked into that and there's apparently some kind of a agreement that it's a non, non competitive disclosure or something with the Safeway?
I can look at all that. That's one of my specialties.
So there's something in there that you can't have another grocery store.
Yeah.
In the Bartels in that complex.
It's probably in the not, in the.
The non-disclosure. So they're not, not the non-disclosure, but the, yeah, there's something in there.
Committed uses and exclusive uses.
Yes, I think so.
Typically.
Yes.
What about the dollar store?
That's not a grocery.
What it used to be.
Oh, right. I think it, it was first.
Would that be in the areas, my question?
Yeah, so it has to do with the who owns it and then what happened in what order. So you can have a coffee shop if they don't have the exclusive rights. Starbucks can come in right next to them and claim coffee exclusive rights. And then they are kind of either grandfathered in or they can drive them out of business.
Okay.
Yeah, it's rights.
That was probably out of, totally out of purpose.
It's my third line. Oh, everybody wants a Trader Joe's.
All good? All right, Commissioner Murphy?
Um, yeah. Can you, Director Davis, give us a little bit of a sneak peek in terms of what's to come this summer? I'd say, you know, not to, we were, it would, I'm I'm excited and eager to see what we have ahead of us. I think we've had, obviously, we don't need to talk about it anymore, but certainly a last challenging couple of meetings that we've some of us endured. But yeah, I'd love to get a sense as to what do we have to look forward to this summer. Where's the fun? Yes.
Flashback's already done, so all downhill from here.
Well, we got through the color palettes. We need to probably get our historic preservation in our local agreement kind of lined up and go back and revisit our code. And Andrew Love, who's our contract planner, is working on that. We also have a wireless code that we need to bring through, so that should be coming sometime this summer. From my understanding, it has had a high level review with our city attorney's office. But I have not had time to get to it. And at some point, I'm like, we got to slow our roll a minute because I got too many things in the hopper. Trying to think.
Might we have anything related to the Mill Pond site?
So the mill site is interested in coming in and kind of getting their project going. So there might be some design standards that we maybe need to look at later this year. But I I don't know enough about that yet to kind of say with certainty where we're at on that. Trying to think of other things. I didn't bring the work plan with me.
That's, that's good enough. That's enough to get, to get me excited and moving forward.
I take that back. I do have something here. Let me see if I can come up with, just to give you an idea. We are trying to do our permit streamlining a little bit, but I don't know that that would necessarily come to the planning commission. That's more of just like creating checklists and making our website a little more user friendly for our customers. So they know when they want to come in and submit for a sign permit or a tenant improvement or a design review board, that that stuff is better laid out on our website. We might have, depending on the FEMA grants, there could possibly be some floodplain, community rating system recertification work in our floodplain. But I doubt that that's going to happen this year because FEMA's, we've kind of lost all of our.
And I see Councilmember Johnson here, because he has also mentioned Snoqualmie Ridge and a couple of meetings, actually, looking at revisiting that. So that's.
Big hot potato for you.
That's exciting.
To go back and revisit our zoning map. So I am anticipating that that is coming.
Probably not this summer if I had to guess. That'd probably be a a bridge too far. But I was curious about the roundhouse. If you think the, that could be coming as a design review at some point in that that near future, if that's further out.
Oh, yeah, we're still waiting for that building permit to come in. So design review on the round, the roundhouse or the, you mean the, yeah, the roundhouse?
Yeah.
That's coming in at the. Does that need design review?
I don't know.
I mean, I'm not sure either, but.
It's a, it's a big project.
We're definitely waiting for the building permit on that. And I.
Probably not summer.
Like, I encourage some of our bigger project applicants to come in and at least give you an overview of what the project is and and just show you. So.
Well, the Model Railroad was a great example.
That was a great example, right.
They came in, they showed us that we went, they offered, you know, we went and saw the site ourselves. And I thought that really brought it to life in a really cool way. And obviously, there's lots to do to fundraise and all of that. But that was, I thought, very helpful in terms of just bringing that to life.
And they are still trying to move forward. So I'm anticipating that they'll probably come in for a pre-app later this summer. And then probably get more into the design review, hopefully this fall. That may be ambitious, but hopefully. So the roundhouse definitely, I'm expecting that to come in. I mean, I thought it would have been in here by now because that was kind of a push. The hospital expansion, of course, you already saw that one. And so that's moving along. They're trying to get their clearing grade permit finalized here probably in the next few weeks. And then we'll be looking at their building permit. So but I'm anticipating construction will start out there soon. So you'll start seeing dirt moving. That'd be exciting. Yeah, that's, and I think the other big push right now is to try to figure out what's going in the old Bartels building and seeing if we can get some movement on that. So.
What is our purview to that? It's owned, right?
Yes, it it is owned. We've reached out to the owner and they are looking for options. As far as another pharmacy, that's was kind of the push right now, but it doesn't look like at this point we have CVS or Walgreens interested in occupying that building. So. I don't know.
I could raise my hand to help with, like, contact with that.
The owner?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, you know, it's all public record. I'm happy to give you the owner's.
Okay, are they in communication with the city?
I mean, we reached out to them and asked them what the plan was for the Bartels. And they're actively looking, I believe, for a tenant right now.
Okay, I haven't seen any.
So. We also are trying to go through and map all of the businesses that we have in the, you know, so we, we just went through the business retail overlay. And so we want to go through and map like what retail is in, you know, is currently up on Center Boulevard and in our downtown historic district and try to keep a running kind of total so we can track that efficiently. So that's, that's another, I mean, there's lots of work for staff to do if we could get some staff. Which would be really helpful. We do have an associate planner. We just went through an interview process. And so we did select an associate planner last week who's accepted the position. And we anticipate that they will start on July seventh. So that was good news. And our permit technician is definitely getting up to speed. And so that's taking a little pressure off of our building official. So things, things are moving in the right direction. It just feels a little slow.
Would it be beneficial to get one of our summer meetings and give you a chance to not have to put another packet together for us?
Possibly.
And get like your head above water?
I'm, I was trying really hard to push on the climate element to get as much done as I could. So possibly I don't want to just hold meetings this summer just to hold meetings. But we still do have, like, I'd like to bring the critical areas ordinance back to have some more discussions about that. And I thought I would have that ready at the next meeting, but I I'm not going to make it.
Is there something, what, what, was there, we don't have to get into the full thing, but was there, we had to revisit it for some reason? Like, what, what's the purpose of bringing that back? I know we spent a lot of time on that last year.
Yes, and it's my understanding that it it might behoove us to go back and kind of revisit, for example, the floodplain elevation where we went from the one foot to the two foot, you know, we probably don't need to go to the two foot. That was a recommendation. It wasn't a requirement. And so maybe pull back and bring that back to the one foot elevation in the floodplain. One, so I'm probably not explaining this right because I need to go, so OTAC is also our consultant for the critical areas ordinance. And so I need to go back and get some more history from Jeff Gray at OTAC and then have him better explain to me what some of the changes are that we may want to revisit. I think there were some critical area buffers to maybe some streams that were recommended to take a maximum buffer that would maybe create some, a lot of onerous issues for the the homeowners.
And I think the clarity around best available science will be helpful because that was, that word was thrown around a lot. And it was like kind of this unquestioned term. And I think we really have to just get to the bottom of like what that means and the implications of that. And I'm not quite sure we, having another cut would be good.
I know we, we probably shouldn't be going too much into too much detail in this meeting without having something on the agenda. So.
There's that. That's not why I came forward, though.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just wanted to say.
I was hoping you, you're keeping us in check.
And ignore the map. Do you remember the map?
Yeah.
Ignore the map. That didn't mean anything for the buffers. Remember how it like cut a swath through a neighborhood, but that stream is not necessarily that size. It was just a random guess. And that just like totally drew a lot, a lot of conversation back then. The map is not binding. It'd be best if that map had never existed.
Yeah. So if you remember, like, I was really, like, that was when I started, when you were all reviewing the critical areas ordinance. And I started asking a lot of questions. Which has kind of prompted more conversations around it. So I think, you know, just in an effort of being transparent, I thought it was beneficial to bring it back to the planning commission. Since you've already made a recommendation, it seemed a little disingenuous then to go to the committee, CD committee and counsel with a different recommendation other than what was discussed. And because I think you had several meetings about this topic. So I just thought it would be good to bring it back. And like I said, I've, I've had conversations with OTAC and I I just need to meld our schedules.
Yeah, that's, that's great. I'm glad, I'm glad we're doing that.
Okay, good.
Practical, though, on on your comment. Next meeting is July seventh, Monday. And that's July fourth weekend, which is Friday. That might be a good meeting to.
Yeah.
To skip and and jump into the third week. I mean, the fourth to July week is, is sometimes problematic.
Yeah, and you'll have your new person starting.
Yes, that's true. Yeah. And, and that's to, that may be a good.
Yeah.
A good solution. Cause I know a lot of people do wait and take Monday to come back, especially if they're traveling. So we can talk about that, possibly canceling.
All good? All right, uh, Christian Lambert, sorry.
I got nothing.
Easy. Okay.
I'm on East Coast time, so.
My goodness. Well, thanks for joining.
Good night.
My goodness. Uh, okay. With that, I move that we adjourn tonight's meeting at nine thirteen. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.